Morning, and I would ask the clerk to call the roll please.
Trustee Duncan.
Here.
Trustee Brendan.
Here.
Trustee Mansell.
Here.
Trustee Mitchell.
Here.
And Trustee Taylor.
Here.
Okay, we are all present. I'm going to ask the body now to please rise for the national or to the pledge of allegiance and a brief moment of respect for our fallen soldiers and seamen in defense of our country over the years. I. Thank you very much, please be seated. Chair will undertake a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Well, second.
For the following items, meeting minutes from eight March 2022, board meeting and vouchers, monthly bills, et cetera, and journal entries. Motion by Duncan, second by Mansell, any discussion? Is there any item that the board would like remove for further discussion? Hearing no request, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Foes, that motion carries unanimously. Okay, public comments? Okay, President's report. What we're going to do, we have two presentations tonight, the first being the Mission Lifeline Award to the Port Edwards Fire Department. On that, I'm sure Chief, you or whoever you designate will be, we'd like to have a picture with the reps from WRFD. Okay, so. Mr. Jolene?
So, yeah, they get, so every year, we submit data to the American Heart Association, what's called Mission Lifeline. And so the data we submit studies all of our patients that suffer from what we call acute coronary syndromes or chest pain. And then specifically of those people having chest pain, how many are having a heart attack? So the treatment, the definitive care for someone having a heart attack is to get them to a facility that can do cardiac catheterization. The closest ones to us are Marshfield and Wassa. So when we arrive to a house and the EKG shows they're having a heart attack, where do you want to go? Wassa or Marshfield? And we have to get you there, and we have to get you there within a 90-minute window. So from the amount of things that have to get done on scene, the communication with the hospitals, and all the treatment during transport, to do this within 90 minutes, and this is including in January when the roads are bad, we could not complete that mission if we did not have effective first responders. And the Port Fire Department has been a, they kind of set the gold standard for what, what first responders should do. I'm very proud of them, and we would not attain this recognition without the support from them. To kind of put it in perspective, that this is our fourth year that, that we've attained this recognition. In addition, we got the Gold Plus distinction. And there are 10 services in the state of Wisconsin that attain Mission Lifeline recognition. And of those 10, only four of us attained Gold Plus distinction on top of it. So I think it's just, really wanted to recognize your fire department and the hard work they do. And without them getting there and initiating that treatment and doing that care, that just sets the stage for when our ambulance shows up, they've got a bunch of the stuff done for us that we can just begin our level of care and get them to the cath lab. And again, that wouldn't be possible without their work. So we just wanted to present them for the 2021 Mission Lifeline Gold Plus Award.
I think something should be noted is, in order to get that distinction of that Gold Plus, 100% of the patients made it to that cath lab in 90 minutes, so. And that's a direct result of the men and women of Port Edwards that responded to those calls. They get so much done before we get there, it sets that timeline in motion and gets us a jump off of that platform, so fantastic job.
Jay, step up there.
That's what you're talking about, I'm here for the important.
Well, send the reps, we've got to have a nice presentation back here, first responders at the service store. And if you guys would step up here, or if you want to back there, it's up to you, Miles. I guess they're covering.
All they can.
Don't knock anything.
So I know these are kind of our core first responders. Captain, Captain Fletcher serves as the Service Director of the Corps. Go down here.
Good job, good job, gentlemen.
Congratulations.
For the takeoff, right, Mr. President, I guess. Okay.
You're the boss, Chief.
Not in this room.
I'm just a politician. Thank you, guys.
I think about how many, especially men, were in their 50s and 60s, a lot of times in professions, 25, 30 years ago, just dropped dead of heart attacks. And how that's become so much more rare. And it's things like that. You just can't say enough as far as quality done and what's been accomplished.
What's the number, does anybody know?
You have to ask them, I don't know. On July 5th, 20 or 2009, I was not feeling well and ended up having a heart attack. And Gary, you remember that day, and I finally called, it was about 4:00 in the afternoon, and by 5:30, I already had a stent put in in the widow maker. And that's how quick it was. And those guys do, and ladies do a heck of a job. So. Okay, moving onward. I'm gonna skip the airport commission because I didn't go to the meeting, I was sitting in a dental chair for an hour and a half that day, so we'll catch up on it next month. The Police and Fire Commission didn't have a meeting either, but we have a very special guest and the newest member of the PFC, whose term will expire five years from now in 2027. And Chief Stewart. We could extend it right now. Chief Stewart, I turn it over.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. We, we just wanted to take this opportunity to introduce all of you board trustees to our new commissioner, this is Andrea Wyland. And she's, as, as many of you probably know her, she's, and her family have been around here for a long time. Raising a nice family in town, and she, I know that she sits on several boards and she's active in the community in many ways. And I think we're real lucky to have her and her perspective for the commission, so I'd like you all to welcome her and.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you, Scott, for the kind words, and I'm excited to, to join the committee. Like Scott said, lifelong in one way or another, residents of the area and moved my family back here about 20 years ago now, but grew up in the Port Edwards area and moved back into the area, and I'm excited to learn more about each of you and your departments and the procedures, and excited to continue to, to serve the community.
Well, we're glad to have you, Andrea. I think the chairman did a good job of screening people for media interview, and did you buy lunch that day for inherited?
I always buy lunch.
I'm trying to remember that.
I buy a cup of coffee.
But we hope to see more of you, you know, and always feel free to stop by and say hi to Luke when you get home and.
Will do.
Glad to, glad to have you aboard. Anybody else? Anything to say?
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
By the extent you're here, are we gonna have any more speaking meetings?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I should have mentioned that the Leo's tied up on the first Monday, which is generally our, our meeting, but we're gonna have one on the second Monday in, in May at right here. Five o'clock.
Nine, May.
Yeah, that's, that's perfect. So it works out for all of us.
At 5:00 p.m., you said?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Very good. I haven't been to one of those in about three years, maybe I should come along.
Three years.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
See, PFC people.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea, again for coming down. Trinity. Sullivan, Second Street, up at Marshall Village. Trustee, Lach McGregor, how are you, sir? Good to see you here.
Very good, thank you.
Would you like to say a few words?
I, as a minister, you're not supposed to say that to me. So I will, I'll wait for a better opportunity to prepare some words, but thank you.
Sir, we do have a one-minute limit anyways.
Okay. And that's actually harder than if you asked me to talk for 20 minutes, so.
Sounds good, congratulations, Caleb.
Thank you very much.
All righty, moving onward and upward, Public Works Committee in their meeting of St. Patrick's Day.
Yes, we did, we celebrated in the green, partially, that day. We covered quite a few things, Ben had a fairly extensive, Ben and Buzz had a fairly extensive update on the winter time, which had gone well, they had pretty much concluded everything, although I'm sure they had no idea what was gonna happen today. The salt shed apparently is, is filled and ready to go forward for next season, so we're ready for that too. Anyway, everything went well in the wintertime. They are starting to look at trees and trim. Ben talked about the ash borer and about 20 trees in the village, so if anybody has one, be aware. He also talked about some of the projects that are coming up. They're gonna be working on curb and gutter on Fourth Street from Brunner to Seneca, hope to have that done by the middle of May. And of course, all of these projects, the price is increasing on several of them as well, which was expected from the uptick in gas and asphalt prices. The Fourth Street project from Seneca Road to River Drive to Port, well, Seneca Road and Port Road are both going to be worked on this summer. And let's see, what else? That was probably pretty much it. Ben also talked about the water system and how all of the testing has been done, and it all shows that things are going well and the water is safe to drink. We did have a small discussion on PFAS, which, and the decision, the decision, the discussion was that we would wait for any regulations or whatever on that from the state until we have very specifics and possibly money to deal with that issue too. So that's kind of an ongoing thing. Craig Caston will be leaving us this summer, I think his official end date is August 1st, but he's going to be on vacation for two months before that, using up his saved-up vacation. And I think both the administrator and Public Works are also looking forward to finding someone as a replacement. Our next meeting, or I shouldn't say our, after reorg, reorganization, this could change. The next meeting right now is scheduled for Public Works on the 21st of April at 4:00 P.M. And that may change. And that's, and now I need to move to approve the funding of the Third Street Completion Project utilizing Gurki for no more than $245,000 to be executed in the summer of 2022. These funds will come from the TIF account.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Mansell. Discussion, and I would just like to ask Buzz, before we speak, discuss it more, did they finally agree on a start date yet, or that's still out and limbo?
Once we sign the contract starting tomorrow, we're looking at a note earlier than one June. Okay.
Anybody else here?
So, the, the bid for 245, is that after the adjusted amount, or was that the original?
The original's around, around 200.
Wow.
It went up, obviously, and the more we delay, they can't guarantee these, it's gonna be for all our projects, and that's across the state.
So, and that would be my next question, are you, have you had a chance to figure out the budgetary impact from these increases with all the projects?
Sure, so this one, by default, it, it comes out of TIF, so there's no per se budget. There's no budget shortfall because the TIF account can't support it. The others are county projects, so they're kind of set. With their, like, Port Road to Seneca, that's a county project, they're not about, they're gonna cover their costs, and that's it, they're not gonna make any profit. So they are pretty much static, a few thousand dollars here and there because of asphalt. And then the only one that we're waiting on the final is Fourth Street. But that's also, I think, gonna be county project, that shouldn't be a problem. Our, our problem's gonna be moving forward for the projects we plan this year.
So you don't have a, you don't know yet?
Well, like I say, other than this one being a high bump, the others are status quo for, for the most part, so there's no budget increase of what we forecasted.
So when you say this year, I'm, I'm.
All the summer projects, Fourth Street, Port, Seneca.
So those were, were not already budgeted for an amount, I'm not trying to be challenging, I'm.
Yeah, no, no, they were budgeted, this is the only one that came back higher than the budget.
Okay.
But the, the default is it's through the TIF, so we can, we can throw money at it without coming back to the board, asking for more money. The challenge we're gonna have is the future projects that they're gonna be way out of kilter when we start talking budget this year, that's gonna be the challenge. So we may not have a lot of projects next year like we're doing this year.
Real? Okay, all those in favor of the motion as read by Chairman Mitchell will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Foes, that motion carries. Anything else, Chairman Mitchell?
No. Yeah.
Chairman Mansell, Park and Recreation, please.
All right, we met March 24th. Did a lot of discussion on upcoming village drummage sales that's happening May 20th and 21st weekend. Buzz has been working on putting the map together, kind of like we did last year, so if you're having a drummage sale or garage sale, you can enter in your address on this map. It's pretty user-friendly, tells you which ones are the closest to you. Also, I believe the fire department's having a bike rodeo that day as well. And there's the Central, the dog park group is going to have a raffle and try to advertise the dog park down there as well. Along with that weekend, DMI is covering the cost of having porta-potties around the area. And the Goodwill truck will be at the fire station Saturday and Sunday to pick up any donated items. Can I start talking a little bit more about the events calendar for the summer? Any on when the splash pad opens? Different, different things, trying to do some more of those get-togethers in the, in the park with some music and the vendors as well. And we did have a new business discussion about a request to paint a mural on the brick wall over here on the municipal building. Mrs. McGrath asked about painting mural, but I think we had a checklist Solaris, technically, right?
While we're waiting on the Mrs. McGrath and their informal committee to provide us the concept before we even go to Solaris.
Okay.
I don't wanna I don't wanna talk Solaris, I don't know what's gonna be on the wall. Sure.
And then it's kind of, well, it, Splash Pad opens May 28th. And then let's see about it, any questions?
Hey Buzz, could you update on the cloud? The business down here, they had some of their front.
Oh, the one, so. Cyberone had some damage, the pound fell, they, today just had their insurance company come out, the quote repairs. Been talking to them about that, so we foresee that being repaired in the next few weeks by the local contractor they're gonna use.
Ben told me that they're gonna leave the barricades up because there's another slab that's compromised.
Yeah, so they looked at all their facade, and honestly, that's possibly gonna start being a recurring theme for our downtown. The whole building is getting to that point, so we're gonna have to have that discussion in the near future. What are we gonna do about it as a village, using what funds, or, or individually, they're gonna all have to do their part on it.
On that note of the, this market right here, the, is it part of the budgeted projects to address the sidewalks?
It is, so there's a $50,000 TIF project this year that's gonna address sidewalks as well as the parking area resurface. And that's, that's being looked at, yeah, that's TIF, TIF Economic Development moments.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you, best, Chairman Taylor, for coming, thank you, and then go right into FHR, please.
The Coolest Committee, we've met on the April 5th, Public Safety. We just talked about whether the report from the fire department, report from the police department. We had some, some issues with some trucks and stuff with the fire department, we're getting those fixed, I think Ben and Patience, we were all looking at it the other day. Police Department, things are good. Some, some things coming up with the Leo Club, bike rodeo, stuff like that. Chief, since you're sitting here, do you have anything to add with that? We had a discussion on the golf carts, electric bikes, wanting to know if we wanted to update any ordinances. And I think we were gonna push that too bit, to have it run through the committee, and then we would make changes from that. That is about it. We don't have any motions. Everything was good there. Our next meeting is three May, 22 at four, anybody have any questions? Then we had FHR on April 7th. Pretty much the entire conversation was talking about a couple things that we want to spend some money on. The three-month, or three-summer help. Hiring a person to kind of shadow Craig Caston until he goes on vacation, so there'll be some overlap there. And with the fire department's new thermal imager, because ours is unusable, and we're able to right now turn it in and get a thousand more credit. That's pretty much it, so by saying that, I am going to make a motion to approve payroll funding approximately $3,000 for the two-month overlap, June through July, for the new employee to ensure seamless transition, funding will be from the existing payroll funding account.
Second.
Yeah, a motion by Chairman Sailor, second by Trustee Duncan, to approve the motion as read by the chairman, is there a discussion? Buzz, you have anything to add? Okay, hearing no request to speak, all those in favor of the motion are read, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Foes, that motion carries.
I will make a motion to approve the funding for the bike trail extension, it's approximately $35,000 that will connect the Riverwalk in our TIF district. Funds will come from the TIF account and be augmented by the legacy grant funding in mid-summer '22.
Second.
Motion by Chairman Sailor, second by Trustee Duncan, to approve the motion as read by the chairman, do we have any discussion?
More details will come out in the Parks Committee two weeks from now, but this is for those of you not involved. From the fire department, where the bike trail crosses over Leetander, from the fire department down Third or Fourth, and then down the backside of Fourth Alley going to Edwards, and then going down Edwards to the statue, that's the connection. So a bike trail will continue there, and then from the statue, that's where the Riverwalk ties into it, to connect it to the Filtration Road, the old 73, going out to Nacusa. So this is our contribution using TIF money. And Legacy starts augmenting that when we start seeing money being expended, so.
The statue.
The statue.
Is there further discussion? Are you fishing?
Just turn the pot.
Okay, hearing no request to speak, all those who signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Go ahead, yeah, aye, any opposed? That motion passes.
Okay, I got one more. No, I know, I'm just saying. And then lastly, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve funding for a thermal camera for the fire department for no more than $3,000 due to life and safety need of the department to replace our old and broken one, funds will come from the village fire department capital outlet.
Second.
Me the motion.
Yes.
Motion by Trustee Mansell, second by Trustee Duncan. Is there any discussion on this? Hearing no request to speak, all those in favor of the motion as read, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Foes?
I will abstain from that. I know.
You make 51% of the chairman of your income from the fire department?
I've been around this too long, someone will come and fight you in the butt. Next meeting, 5 May at 4:30.
We have this this long.
Every time.
You have at least twice a year.
Okay, I would like to call Chairman Duncan for the committee minutes and
All right.
I'm gonna miss you.
If you'd like, I can give you a few insults before you go.
I would hope you would, just to make sure that we're still okay.
Okay. All right. We met last Thursday, April 7th, we met again before the meeting tonight. We have one item. The, I'm not gonna read the entire resolution, I'll read the, the language of the ordinance that will be adopted. And that will go under where in our, in our.
It's gonna eventually get a chapter four, please.
Okay. I'll look for any, or any person required to comply with sex offender registration pursuant to Wisconsin statute 310.45, or required to comply with any comparable statute in another state or under federal law, shall have the prior approval or consent of such person supervising agent before entering upon any public grounds. Public grounds are defined as any and all property within the boundaries of the village of Port Edwards that is owned, rented, or managed either in full or in part by the village of Port Edwards, by the school district of Port, or of the Port Edwards School District, or by any subentity or agent of either the village or the school district. Public streets and sidewalks are excluded from the requirements of this ordinance. So I'll move approval.
Motion by Chairman Duncan, do I have a second? Motion by Chairman Duncan, do I have a second? Do I have a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, second by Trustee Saylor, is there discussion?
It's all good to get out my writing and. Remember I can still draft an ordinance for statute. Been a while.
I, I will comment. Probably gonna vote for this, but it's reluctantly. Because I think it's still. It's like double indemnity and I'm not, I, I am not convinced by anything that I've seen and read so far. That it's actually going to achieve what we are stating or what we hope it will do. I do see it as a. It's probably not the right word to use, but kind of an appeasement of concerns. So, and that may be the value in it. I guess that's pretty much my statement.
Comment.
Comments.
The reason it's drafted as it is because, going again, I spent seventeen years defending. And a little bit prosecuting. And you have to have reasonable suspicion stop at somebody and question them. This allows police to have the reasonable suspicion and question. Whether somebody that they realize or know is a sex offender has permission to be on. So it gives them an opportunity that they would not necessarily have. At that point, the individual, if they violate or answer the question, yes, I have permission. Our department can then check with an agent, if they lie, then we charge them violating the cell ordinance. And then the agent can put them on a probation hold, incarcerate them, and they can be charged with a class A misdemeanor for obstruction of justice. So I don't think this has minimal teeth. It does make everybody involved have to think about what's going to happen before they just immediately go off and sit in a park and start. Being around children and other people without having at least the idea subject.
And another comment to, I don't know what the decisions will be made or will be made in the future. I would like to see it looked at again in, I don't know, six months or a year, probably maybe a year is more likely. Just to see how. Our police department responds to it, how it works, how well it's worked. Just to look at it, let's see.
Anybody else? Without objection, I'd like to go off the table, Chief. Anything to add?
No, I think it sounds reasonable. It puts an onus on the offender, not on the board or, you know, a new. I guess we're a burden for us.
Okay. The motion by Chairman Duncan, second by. Trustee Saylor. To approve the motion, uh, being resolution twenty twenty two five. Uh, all both in favor of the motions passage, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Everybody voted aye, just by that, that's correct.
Okay.
I didn't hear Betsy.
Aye.
Always hear you, so that's why we're concerned.
Don't spell it.
When I can't hear her, I just jack her up and if she's starting to get on my case, then I could just move on.
You can get one of these, Eric, twenty years I might.
All righty, Chairman Duncan, is that everything?
Uh, that is everything.
Do you have anything in before you leave us and go to the field of education to go back to that?
Well. I, uh, the. Going back to the field of education was not something I necessarily intended. A few months ago, it just ended up being something. I don't know, it's been an interesting experience, I hope I've done some good. I don't, as I tell everybody, you know, I, I do this not because it makes me feel, you know. Wonderful or great or for my own self grandizement, I do it because I think I have something to offer. I just always remember was a kid, my mother always told me that I almost died at birth and she promised God that I would help mankind, she'd make sure. And so that's, every day I might go to a meeting, I don't feel like being there, I just think that my mother's telling me to. Get going, do something good today. So. I will say it took about three or four months before most of you realized I was making jokes, that was fun.
You're better at it now.
I did it dry as could be, just to see everybody's reaction, so much fun, anyway, but. I go back into education as we have a transition going on in the school district with Kyle leaving. It was just something that I kind of felt I couldn't just say no when called upon again, so. I've got plenty of things in my life going on and things to do, but. I tried, so I hope that. I haven't. Offended too many, irritated even more. And made myself ungracious. Sometimes I. In order to get things done, push, cajole and. Act in ways that may not always be. Collegial.
I've been around attorneys all my life, just like Chief has, you know, so I understand where you're coming from, from the get go.
Yeah, it's always a, it's a, it's a chicken and egg, do people like me become lawyers or do we become, or, or because we're lawyers, we become like me? So. I don't know. But.
Well, anyway, thank you, Dana.
Sure.
Okay, unfinished business from previous meeting. New business. If I may. Suggest this to the. Incoming Public Works Committee, I think we should have a road trip to. Especially the third street, you know, what you guys are gonna do, I think it's six foot or longer and you'll understand it better. With your weather committee, we can take care of that.
Mr. President. I think something like that would be good for the whole board and include our water sewer, just to have a understanding, maybe even cemetery.
That would be probably about the same to do, like. You know, make it part of the public works, but encourage everybody to tangle on. Good idea.
I can pull a trailer, just all just pile on the back.
I wouldn't pile on the back for trailer drive.
I bet he rides.
Sorry.
Buzz, you're on before we get out of control.
Uh, sorry, on page nineteen, you have your monthly report. We're still monitoring the whole COVID thing, there's only twenty active cases in the county, so it's, it's getting to be status quo. And our, our vaccination numbers, village wise as well as county wise, have basically plateaued for many two months now, so. So I think we're, we're at what we're at and we'll just continue that way. We have transitioned, even with today's interesting weather, we have transitioned in the spring, summer activities for our, all our departments. Uh, no changes in our human resources, we are starting the hiring process next week with the applications coming in for Kason's position. And we could have a. Final candidate for the June FHR committee to inform them of the choices, I'll be involved in that. Interview process as well as a couple of the public works guys to include the public work. No issues on our payroll expenditures and so on, we see public works, we're still tracking that, we did get our. State emergency grant approved for the damages down here to park. So once we see those funds come in, they'll just be placed back into the park account to repair the damages with the fencing and the work that's going on down there. So that's good news, that's.
Can I just ask a question?
Concerned.
Are they, uh, working on the fence here soon?
Yes, they're doing it now, actually, so that's when you see some work going on there, so what we've started to work there, just again, it's, it's tied to. If you don't jump on any contracts now, the price just keeps going up, so we're having to make some moves very quickly. In, in some cases, and that's one of the cases there, and then the money that will be replenished to us from the state should come in the next few weeks. We were the only entity in the county to file and get the money, even though damages happened all across the county. So the money's there, we just, you just gotta know where to get it from.
Well done.
All our projects for the federal money have been submitted, so all we're talking about, even the projects here from the county and whatnot, we've submitted all that for the federal infrastructure bill. So there may be an interesting point in mid summer that even after we expend tax money. Some of these projects, we may get some federal money that just can replenish our coffers, because it's, it's, the federal money is playing catch up, so it's gonna take a while to get those approved. Uh, safety, you got your fire police and fire information, so no changes there, budget, no issues there. We, we finished our first report for ARPA money at the end of this month, so no, nothing at a concern. General government. We're talking the legacy, we're in the contract mode right now with legacy, and then we'll make the official announcement once it happens. Strategic meeting is on the twenty third of April, Saturday, we will start arriving at eight forty five, will commence at nine and it'll go at, at least till four, probably to five. Lunch and meals throughout the day are provided, so just, just come with your. Your discussion hats on, we'll have a robust format of topics and it's really not really gonna be just a data dump. It's more of an engaged discussion and we've invited, just like we did last year, some. Key village officials and residents, as well as some members from the county government, as well as some. Prue and Testan have been invited, Testan probably is gonna come, he said, and it's not for them to do any stumping or anything, it's, it's for us to have an opportunity to engage in certain issues that they may be able to help us with. Diane can speak more to it, election went pretty well, I don't know if my language is right here, one of the partisan guys should have, okay, so we had all this big. To do about, you know, being forced to take these election oversee oversight from Democrats, Republicans, at the end of the day, one showed up, they were trained, they participated. And so on, and it all went well, so, no issues with the election.
Did they stay the whole time from open to close?
Yeah, it was just one.
Okay.
I think in the fall, the other ones will probably show up, yeah.
So that went well and a good turnout for the village, you know, thirty some odd percent for an election like this. Uh, two add-ons in there, if you go to your smartphones, Goport Edwards is the app for the village, so I would recommend a download of it. It's an easier way, it's very, it's in the initial phases where it can give you immediate access through your phone to go to our website for. The meetings, the schedules, contact information, but it's also a better way to us to push emergency information out like a. Boy, your water, that type of stuff, so we're gonna start that discussion, so there's been very little traffic on it. But we're gonna build over time, working with the company of how we get the word out, so, and they're gonna give us some feedback, how many people have downloaded it, how many people are utilizing it? It is only a one-way communication, so you can't send a note back to the village saying, hey, my, no one's cutting my friend's grass, like, so, doesn't work that way.
Are you saying, I'm sorry, are you saying that's an app or web site?
It's an app, so it's got the village little logo, Goport Edwards is the.
So you go to the App Store.
App Store, just type in Goport Edwards, you'll get it free and then you'll have an immediate, and what that does, when I post something on it. It also feeds our Facebook page and other mechanisms through one device, so we'll see how it goes and again, we, we. We got the support for a year, we'll, we'll assess it in one year, see how much use we did with it and take it from there. Today, and Dana might be interested here, the Supreme Court, Wisconsin Supreme Court, court made a very important decision on agricultural designation for properties in the village. So it's not if your property is zoned agricultural, it's, uh, that's good, if in many cases, we have about fifty parcels total, and I'm counting that go over there. Where a property owner, zone residential is taking the ag discount and it's a massive discount, I mean, I got a parcel across the river there that. One guy's paying two grand a year, one guy's paying sixty bucks a year, same parcel, same size, same zoning, but because they took the ag discount. Supreme Court came out today saying that cannot happen anymore, it's not allowed unless you can prove you're actually using it for agricultural purposes, so developers will be cut out of that. So, uh, it's gonna be very interesting as we go through, I've already talked to the treasurer, county treasurer, they're going through the records and we're gonna see what happens.
Do you happen to know the vote?
Oh, and I, I, I'll send you the, I, I, no, I didn't read.
I would, I would love to see how the vote.
Yeah.
Was it, it was, was it split or was it unanimous?
It was unanimous, well, I almost said, I'll, I'll send you what the league municipalities have.
Maybe Betsy wants to borrow an offering plate and walk door to door.
Yeah, so it's, it's, I mean, it, it brings some parity to a lot of us when it comes to the village, if you have an actual purpose for agricultural, you'll get the full conditions of, uh. The, the deduction, but we have.
Income.
Might be a lot of change. Well, it honestly is really gonna impact our late properties that are across the way, not sold.
You're gonna garden?
Oh, okay, only, so if grandfathered in, then if somebody already is claiming the agriculture.
No, no, we're gonna change the classifications, so that's what the county's gonna start doing now, going through all the records and adjusting that.
Okay, I'm gonna remember this fact, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I just, just understand that, that's gonna be something big happening, and on twenty sixth May, as Betsy mentioned, Music Fest will be, uh. Music has been scheduled, Yellow Pellet is gonna do an opening, Chatterbox will be there for food, five thirty to eight P M on the Thursday night. Yes, I know it's May, but we wanted to start it off and that will be the official kickoff, the hundred twentieth anniversary of the village of Port Edwards, even though our birthday is on nine June. We're gonna do it on the twenty sixth of May and then do something later, so that'll be in Ripple Creek, just like we did, and we'll take it from there and we already talked about the rum and soup, it's up to your questions, it's all I got.
That it?
That's it.
For treasure. Opi dopi, uh. Trustee comment?
I just have no, for the strategic meeting, I will have to leave for a little bit, they are burying my aunt, so I'll step out for that and I'll come back.
You're picking up your trip to the cemetery.
Ooh, field trip.
I would just like to thank Dana for his time and energy with this board, there's not a lot of people that stand up and volunteer to do this, except for this election for some reason. But usually, you know, there's a lot of years where there's nobody and you got a point and stuff like that, so I appreciate your time and energy.
Thanks.
I look forward to working with Caleb when he. Takes over and that's it.
Okay, the only thing I have to say about committee calendar. Uh, I think I got Buzz, he agreed with it, but we're, the first time through the new committees, I see there is what you're gonna get, we're gonna stick with these times, these dates. But the chairman of the next board, beginning on April nineteenth, you and your committee are not locked to that same date every month, okay? You can, if it's gonna work out better for your new mates or whatever, you know, feel free to. Move it around, but just try and once you get a date that's gonna work, try and stick with that same time, you know, like the third Thursday or whatever, or something like that. Okay. Without objection.
Right on.
Would you do me the honor and close the floor meeting, Mr. Duncan?
I call it adjourned.
Yes. Seven fifty P M, thank you, Dana.
Sure.